And we have quite a crowd joining us today for our work session. I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you, commissioners. Before I turn it over to Bob Trianzki to say a few opening remarks, just for anyone who's listening. These are work sessions where these are for informational and for educational purposes only. No decisions are made in these in these sessions. So with that, I will turn it over to Bob to lay out what we're here to talk about today.
Actually, since this is really a work group of the CJCC, this is this is kind of Mike's show this afternoon. We'll tee it up and we'll we know we we're still figuring out how to do these combined, but but Mike has put this together. And so we'll start with Mike.
Thanks, Bob. So as as Bob, the confusion really is around. This is Mike for our criminal justice coordinator and you know, this work group, the mobile response work group, as we've called it, is is a joint work group shared between the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition. Our goal when we started this about a year and a half ago was to make sure that when people was really to help build a continuum of crisis services. And most importantly, that when people left the crisis center that they would have follow-up care provided to them. So that the crisis center did not become just a revolving door. And last week, the commission, you approved the expansion of the the Integrated Crisis Team Program to provide that care coordination with their contract through Radac and peer support services through Burton Nash and DECA. And so our original goal kind of has been accomplished, but but as we began working together, we identified additional goals among this continuum of care that we felt. And so tonight, you're going to hear about this concept of of integrated crisis call system. And so therefore, we have headquarters and locations along with our our community partners. And in a few weeks, you'll hear about the the second piece that we're working on, which is the expansion of the access center at Burton Nash to provide weekend services and and these. So but call center work. And so Bob's going to play a video for us that kind of explains how this continuum of care is important for us here in Douglas County.
First, I'm going to unmute. I'm going to start with this graphic that we that we keep coming back to because I think it's important for all members of the community to understand what we're talking about. When we talk about an integrated system of care. So as Mike said, our work as a behavioral health coalition really grew out of the idea that the community's aspiration to add a crisis center to our community was not going to be a magic bullet that really solved the issues that we were trying to address, which is for, you know, far too many people wind up engaged with the criminal justice system or engaged with emergency medical services that are not appropriate, or they wind up in the emergency department. So a full integrated system of care has a number of components, right? And it starts with a person in crisis in the community. But if you have a 24/7 continuum that includes a mobile crisis line, mobile crisis teams, and post-crisis wraparound services, you're just more likely to intercept a person and resolve their crisis or their problem before they wind up in the wrong in the wrong space at the wrong time for the wrong reasons. You know, what we're trying to do is build a system of care that provides the the right care in the right setting for for anybody who needs it. So at sometimes, you know, I learned a lot from Sesame Street, and I think sometimes agencies put together videos that are are helpful to sort of set the stage. And so we've been working with some videos from a project called Crisis Now, and it's done a lot of this crisis mobile mobile response work. And I just want to again, set it up. I know commissioners, you've seen these videos at the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and in the listening session. But for the benefit of everybody who might be on this call this afternoon, we just kind of want to write a quick overview of what we're talking about. We're talking about an integrated system of care with a mobile component. Are you forgot you're able to see that right now?
Not anymore.
Is it back?
Yep.
Okay. We'll go full screen and
It's been a bad day. You've been in a bad car accident or experiencing chest pain. Fortunately, there is an emergency medical system built to respond immediately to your crisis. Now rewind. It's been a bad day, but this time it's due to a mental health crisis like thoughts of suicide. The same emergency medical system that responds to chest pain also responds to this type of crisis and is less than ideal to handle it. Yet it is this system that responds to thousands of people in a mental health crisis every day. In general, everyone in a mental health crisis gets a there, a person in hours in three days for connection to mental health care. This approach is difficult for patients and wastes a lot of resources. But the Crisis Now model outlines a tested and proven alternative, a way to improve crisis systems across the country by expanding the options for those of us in a crisis, while reducing overall healthcare costs by creating a true emergency crisis service. And there are big savings in the justice system, too, while dramatically improving the citizen and their family members. Drawn from current national best practices in crisis response, Crisis Now focuses on three components that help ensure an appropriate level of care to anyone in crisis. Component one, a crisis call center staffed by specialists that coordinate all levels of crisis care. They evaluate the current crisis and can support and stabilize up to 90% of the cases they get. Those that need more, get more with these hubs dispatching appropriate resources and then supporting those resources and finding the best solutions. Component two, 24/7 mobile crisis teams that work in the streets, meeting people where they are, and for the majority, resolving their crisis right then. Dispatched by the call center hub, they lessen the burden on local police and reduce the stigma that some feel when a uniformed officer knocks on their door. Component three, crisis stabilization locations, which constitute the retreat model, can offer short-term care for people who need support and observation regardless of their level of crisis. These programs operate 24/7 and are the right door to everyone in a mental health crisis, including those that may require involuntary treatment. These high-tech, high-touch facilities divert away from the emergency departments and jails while providing immediate specialized treatment. Police no longer need to decide between EDs or jail. The no wrong door approach reduces the time needed to handle these cases from hours to minutes and allows police to go back to supporting public safety, a role they're uniquely trained to do. Let's review the impact of the Crisis Now model in Maricopa County, Arizona, fourth most populous county in the U.S. In 2017, Maricopa County Police connected more than 23,000 people in a behavioral health crisis directly to crisis care. And those people were accepted 100% of the time. The Crisis Now initiatives saved the time equivalent of 37 full-time officers, reducing wait times in emergency departments for behavioral health patients by a total of 45 years, saving local hospitals and emergency departments a total of 37 million in avoided costs and losses, freeing them up to help the patients they're designed to treat while routing behavioral health patients to a course of care that's best suited to their needs, and reducing Maricopa County's overall healthcare costs by an estimated 260 million, more than twice the cost of Crisis Now services. To learn more about how Crisis Now can make a difference in your community, go to crisesnow.com and download our white paper. It's been a bad
Okay, so there most and and crisis call centers and air traffic control system for our crisis continuum. What we want to focus on this afternoon is the the work of the work group as it relates to the call center specifically. I'm going to toss it back to Mike of the players because I think what you see another example of real integrated work in developing a proposal and a plan and a vision for how this would work.
Thanks, Bob. Commissioners, just to introduce to you our work group. The the people who are really driving this effort want to acknowledge Burr from Heartland Radac, Stacy is a co-chair for this work group, and Monica Kurtz from Kansas Suicide Prevention Center Headquarters. She's also co-chairing this work group. Joining her from KSP HQ is CEO Steve DeVore. Vernon from Burton Nash, Stephen O'Neil is joining us. And then from DECA, Sandra Dixon, and from our emergency communication government, Tony Foster. So here's Stacy Cooper.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Bob, for the introduction. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real fast. I just developed a visual. I want to make sure everybody can see that. Just to really recap what this mobile response work group has been doing. These are just bullet points to give insight. We started this work group with me as the co-chair, October of 2020, and we, you know, gathered a group of folks from law enforcement to behavioral health, city, county leadership, lived experience to sit together, have some collaborative conversations, evaluate data, and come up with some idea about what we'd like to see moving forward with the component of, you know, the crisis line and a mobile access type of response. In 2020, we tasked KSP HQ with actually developing proposal that would outline that crisis call hub that you saw in that video, and they're going to be speaking of that today. This 2021 year, we were actually saw a lot of movement towards some of the goals that this work group started with, which was creating a proposal with Burton Nash and DECA collaboratively around a mobile access team. And this commission will be hearing some more of that in June of 2021. But at the end of the day, we're really moving forward with a lot of the work that this group has been focused on. We have vetted these proposals with the Integrated Crisis Team, the BHLC. We conducted a listening session recently. We're able to get some great feedback from the community. We have some things coming up, and we're going to continue this work. It really doesn't end, even though we're going to be looking at these proposals and launching them various initiatives within 2020 and 2021. But as you can see, we've made a lot of headway, and I really want to make sure that Monica and Steve have the majority of the time here so that they can kind of get into what they're going to be speaking of around the mobile or the crisis call line. I'm going to stop sharing here if I can.
Okay, it sounds like it is my turn to share my screen. Get into presentation mode. Hello, my name is Monica Kurz. As Stacy and Mike said, I've been co-chairing the Mobile Response Subcommittee and the Vice President for External Programming with KSP HQ here in Douglas County. And before we get into the kind of meat of the crisis call center hub or the air traffic control that we're talking about today, going to throw it over to our CEO, Steve DeVore.
Great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, county commissioners and county staff. I mean, it's a pleasure being here with you all this afternoon for this work session. As Monica just mentioned, my name is Steve DeVore, and I'm very proud to be the president and CEO of KSP HQ, Kansas Suicide Prevention HQ, formerly kind of known as Headquarters, formerly known as Headquarters Counseling Center, formerly known as HQ. So all of those are interchangeable for for our organization. I just want to spend a couple of minutes sharing with you, kind of teeing up how we got here today. I'll let you all read the read the screen, some of the some of the notes that Monica put on our on our presentation. But I hope by now, everybody knows that's in this room that that our organization, we've been providing services to Douglas County residents for over 50 years. Although the scope of our services have changed considerably over those 50 years, our commitment to high-quality, professional, evidence-based practices are stronger today than they ever have been. The opportunity for our organization to partner with other outstanding local organizations such as Burton Nash, DECA, Heartland Radac, and many others, I feel is a testament to our organization's unique abilities. And more importantly, I think it's the collaborative abilities of multiple organizations simply wanting to work together to be able to provide enhanced services for our entire community. We are extremely proud to be considered experts in crisis intervention, both at the state level and locally. We are often called upon first to provide our knowledge and our expertise in policy and in processes, both to communities, schools, businesses, and throughout the chamber, throughout the state legislature that involve topics such as suicide prevention, crisis intervention, and online emotional support. We started exploring and talking with community partners about this idea and what has now become known as the air traffic control model concept clear back in 2018. And today, we are one step closer to finally witnessing this becoming a reality. I want to reintroduce Monica, our Vice President here for External Programming. Monica was part of the original conversation clear back in 2018, and she has worked tirelessly with with many other people to bring us to where we are today. So with that, I want to turn this over to Monica to spend some time and detail what our proposed plan is for providing a crisis call center hub in Douglas County.
Thanks a lot, Steve. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't still muted. And so as Steve, we're very excited to be bringing this level of of service to Douglas County and to be to be talking with you all today. Bob already shared this crisis continuum graphic with you all. I pull it back up just simply to to place the proposal that we're talking about today well within the framework that you all are already very familiar with, this crisis continuum that we're talking about building here in Douglas County and are well on our way to building. And so as has been several times, today, we're talking about that crisis call center hub. As you see on the flow chart there, we know that for many folks, many people who are experiencing a crisis, the phone call to a crisis line is very often their first point of contact in that immediate crisis, or maybe with the mental health system for the first time ever. You know, a truly functioning crisis calls or crisis continuum has an easily recognizable number and a way to access services that's not complicated. And that's what we're talking about today is a place to call to get started. The other point I really want to think about here is that we know that for some folks, that phone call will be enough of an intervention to keep them out of the crisis system altogether, probably not the mental health system altogether, but the crisis system altogether. And we think that that's really important because that just means that we are are truly looking out for not adding to trauma that folks may already have and that we're offering them an inexpensive to them free option to get their needs met right away. So that we talk a little bit about, you know, what's already going on here in Douglas County. We know that Douglas County residents have been using the Headquarters Counseling Center crisis line for 50 years. And, you know, as a part of the Mobile Crisis Response Work Group, and I believe we talked about this quite a bit at our CJCC meeting, we really dug into what crisis data do we have available here in Douglas County. And so what you're looking at here is a bar graph of our Douglas County calls by hour. You'll see that those really peak for us starting at about 4:00 P.M. and then don't really drop off again until after that 12:00 A.M. hour. So that's truly when we see our phones already ringing the most, and it's starting to give us an idea about when when folks may need us more, though, as you'll see, 24 hours a day, someone is reaching out. So what can callers expect? What happens when you call the crisis line right now? Well, our callers expect to receive high-quality telephonic crisis counseling that's confidential and free. We truly have an emphasis on reflective listening and collaborative problem solving. It's because we have a belief that folks hold the key to their own recovery and to their own resolution of crisis. And what we see ourselves as is a conduit to be able to figure out what then those next steps need to be. At this point, we know that over 95% of our calls are resolved without law enforcement involvement and hope to maintain that as we know that volume will increase with the Douglas County crisis line coming on board. So, you know, you may be thinking, like, what do we mean by a high-tech or a crisis call center hub? What does air traffic control really mean? And I think that air traffic control is a really apt metaphor for what we're talking about here. You all know when you board a plane that you're going to be safe, that there's someone on the ground who's keeping track of where your plane is in space, who's giving direction about when those planes can land and take off. You know that as you travel across country, that there's someone else to hand off to, that that plane isn't going to get lost. And the theory that we're operating under is that every person in Douglas County, every person in crisis deserves that same level of attention and that we need to have the capabilities, the technologies, and the capacity in order to help keep track of folks when they're in crisis. I've heard too many stories about people falling through that safety net of identifying that they or a loved one needs help, reaching out for that help, and then not knowing what to do next. And so we really think that the crisis call hub is a part of the answer in ordering, in order to make crisis services more accessible. So what does that mean? What should you all be expecting of an enhanced crisis call hub and air traffic control? Well, for starters, it should operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We buy a lot of snacks at KSP HQ and more so on Thanksgiving, right? Because we have folks coming in 365 days a year. We you should expect that that line will be staffed with highly trained counselors that are able to respond to any call that comes in. You should expect that we'll provide supervision by clinically licensed staff and that we have the know-how to assess callers for risk of suicide and to respond to that risk should it come up. And all four of those things are things that we're already doing at at KSP HQ. So what is the enhanced piece? Well, I think it's these three bottom bullets that what we're asking for is the ability to be able to dispatch a mobile access team. Part of what we talked about during that listening session, and we'll have a work study on that component as well. But beyond just that access team, because remember, we're going to we're going to resolve maybe 80% of these calls online. So that means that we really do need an enhanced ability to do warm handoffs. We need to connect folks with the crisis center. But beyond that, we need to be able to coordinate better connections with our outpatient healthcare and behavioral healthcare providers. You know, on this call, we have, you know, Stacy Cooper from Radac, Sandra Dixon from DECA, and Stephen O'Neil from from Burton Nash, which are honestly just like a very small glimpse into the number of partners that we need to make this call hub work. And we've started having really robust conversations about what it is like for someone to call into a centralized number and be able to be seamlessly connected to the next service that makes the most sense without having to get out the yellow pages, write down the numbers for when folks are available, and try to figure out how to navigate those services themselves. We think that that's going to be a really key part to changing the experience of folks who are in crisis in Douglas County. So in in our ideal world, we would be able to start this planning phase that I'm getting ready to talk about in July. We would very much like to get to work on establishing this crisis call hub in Douglas County at least a year ahead of the statewide launch of the 988 three-digit crisis number. We want an opportunity to make sure that Douglas County residents are getting a high quality of service, that all of our kinks are worked out in our system of care before it becomes even more complicated for all of Kansas with 988. So starting in July in our planning phase, we'll continue the collaboration with our community stakeholders that we've already talked about, both those service providers and also the interfacing that we're doing with the community. We do have some internal preparations that we need to to make. We'll be reprogramming call software and training existing staff on how to adapt to the enhanced capabilities of the Douglas County crisis line. We'll be hiring some additional staff. We want a dedicated program coordinator who's going to be able to manage all of these quality connections that I'm just talking about. We're also putting in some additional shift supervisors to ensure that every call is answered when it comes in and that our calls specialists and volunteer counselors have the support that they need to make both clinical decisions and have the ability to manage those calls when they come in. And of course, we have some policies and procedures that will need to be updated. We're identifying our quality assurance outcomes and measurements, and we need to to build and identify the data measures that we're going to talk about a little bit later. We're also, thanks to the call software that we have, have the ability to do some call mapping in order to create a staffing plan that that can be responsive to to high-volume shifts. So we expect that that planning phase will take anywhere from two to three months, and then we can can dive right into implementation. That's where we'll see that live switch go on. And we'll be identifying a phone number that that's already exists here at headquarters to be the Douglas County crisis line. And we'll have those mechanisms established for the staffing model, as I was talking about. And we're going to continue to use that Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition and Integrated Crisis Teams to facilitate the community partnerships and and those really strong mechanisms for treatment connections. We believe that my my RC or my resource connection will be an invaluable part of that connection making. If you know anything about my organization, it's that we're always training, and that will be a part of our implementation phase as well, both for existing staff and new staff, to ensure that we're meeting their needs as we're asking them to meet the community needs. And again, always updating those policies and procedures in a responsive way to what we're learning about the crisis system as we're building it here in Douglas County. We have a strong emphasis on on being accountable, you know, both to our funding stakeholders, but also to the folks who who utilize our service, which is why we think that capturing that data and having an ability to to report it back will be an important part of this implementation phase. And as the mobile access team comes online, we'll be finalizing those forms and procedures about how we can manage a queue for that team, dispatch them to where they're needed. We have two of our staff from Burton Nash and KSP HQ who are already working on those procedures, are already talking about what what many of those mechanisms need to look like. So we're ready to go when the team is ready to go. So a little bit more about our agency. And as I said before, you should expect that you will have highly trained counselors answering answering your line. And and I can assure you that that we place a strong emphasis on everyone who answers our phone line being very prepared to do so and having the support that they need. All of our counselors, whether they're paid or volunteer, completed approximately 100 hours of training and role-play practice before answering the phones. It's not a good idea to come through our training if you're not someone who's going to role-play because we do a lot of that before we put you in live. The guarantee that we make to our counselors is that we can't necessarily give them every scenario in a training simulation, but that we can really hone their problem-solving and critical thinking skills so that they're prepared to meet what comes in on the phone line, no matter what rings. So training topics include that reflective listening and collaborative problem solving that I was talking about. We utilize those for the safety planning that we find to be incredibly important on our calls. All of our counselors are able to do suicide screening and assessment that's consistent with the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline's imminent risk policy. That's really a gold standard policy that you'll see reflected in many national documents when it comes to thinking about building crisis systems. We also cover strategies for counseling youth, supporting those with traumatic lived experience, including sexual assault, abuse, and substance use, and other topic-specific resources that are kind of like very subject-specific topics so that people feel like they have a baseline going in. We will be increasing staffing. I already mentioned that program manager position that we think is going to be very important. And two shift supervisors that will be actually in our call room and some additional call specialists. The goal is to have between one and five counselors available to answer the phone between paid staff, volunteer counselors, those shift supervisors, and call specialists at any given time. We know, for instance, that between that 4:00 P.M. and 12:00 A.M. time is our historically busiest time, and that's when we need more people in the in the call room during our very middle of the night hours. We don't see that we're as busy. And so we'll we'll see staffing go down to to be responsive to what those needs are. As far as data measures, to be very honest, we have some hammering out to do here. For those of you who have done any work in a in a phone line type area, especially if it's in crisis, you know that gathering demographic data from folks can be tricky when people are in crisis. So what I always tell with tell folks when we share our data is that I know that it's messy and that we kind of do the best that we can. So part of that planning phase is really drilling down on some of these kind of proposed data measures to think about how we can truly capture a good picture for you all and for the public about what we're doing and how we're being successful. I know off the bat that something that's going to be incredibly important and a metric of success for us is that call resolution or outcome that you see in number three. You know, we know that what we want to see is that the majority of our phone calls are ending in safety plans and that we are not needing to utilize that active rescue through Tony Foster at 911 or the the mobile teams nearly as much as we're able to stabilize folks at home. And that the other really meaningful piece will be that number of referrals or connections we're making to any number of community partners. And so that's something that, like I said, during that planning phase, we're really hoping to get some input on about what will be meaningful for folks. Not so we have data that's not just useful internally, but also externally. Not so we have data that's not just useful internally, but also externally. Now, I've said this before and I'll say it again, I have been told that I can be sort of like drinking from a fire hose. It's, it's a lot of information in a short amount of time. And so I, I think that we went through that relatively quickly. Hopefully those were, were some of the high points that, that give you an idea of, of really what we're trying to build here in Douglas County. And now we maybe have some time to, to discuss and ask some questions. And I could stop sharing my screen unless there's a protest.
This is Commissioner Portio. I really appreciate all of the presentations. I think it's really nice to see how all of these pieces fit together. So I don't have any questions at this time, but I appreciate all of the information.
This is Commissioner Kelly. This is great. Stuff and seeing how far it's come. I do have a question, maybe Monica, I'm not quite sure. I'm just curious, you, you were talking about the data and you think in Bob's video, it talked about reducing the number of calls to 911, you know, reducing the number of times that fire and medical or police are called up. Do we have any data? Tony, do you have any idea? I'm not sure who to ask this question to. There are so many great people on the screen. But, you know, do we have any idea of how many people are playing 911 now that we think will?
I don't have any active data right now in front of me, but we can pull that data. It's, it's, there's probably about five different call types that we use that we can correlate into these type of situations that we, we can't at this point in time, because we don't track it, is the repeat callers throughout the night. I would say that it's, it's significant. There's a significant number of, of, of calls that we take on a daily basis that would be routed through the service if, if implemented.
Yeah, I'd be interested if you could follow up with some of that data. It's just as we think about, you know, so many of these things that we've talked about, whether it's the Crisis and Recovery Center or, or, or all of these things should have an impact in another area. And I just want to be full about what those impacts are and how we reach to that so that we can create a sustainable system for these things. I mean, I think with the course and sales tax, we do have some sustainability, but I, it's just something I'm thinking about. That's all. And so, yeah, I would appreciate that data.
I can, I can work on some data for you and, and, and get it pulled and correlated into, in a, something that'll make a little bit of sense and shipped over to you as soon as possible.
Thanks.
This is Commissioner Reed here. I too am really excited about this and that was a, a lot of information and, and super clear. So thank you for all of that. I think my follow-up question right now is just thinking about, you know, as you mentioned, Monica Headquarters does really extensive training. And it's really quality training, even though I haven't been through the whole thing. I know it's quality training and I'm wondering just and, and tweet capacity and stuff, I'm thinking about kind of what external training looks like and where you see some potential needs for that, you know, like whether it's with the different law enforcement agencies around the county and kind of what, what referrals might look like if they were called first and wanted to connect somebody or just with other agencies. And I know you kind of touched on this, that there's a, a number of agencies that, that you all would be work on. But anyway, I'm just curious if you have thought much about what some sort of, obviously not 100-hour training, but some sort of this, what the goals of this looks like and how we really get that message out throughout the community. Is that question making sense? I'm looking at you mostly, Monica, but anybody who has some.
Commissioner Reed, it, it does make sense. And I think that you're really kind of speaking a language that, that I like to speak, right? Which is to think about how do we all get on a calm is, is sort of the views and because we think about this a lot, just even with some of the suicide screenings that we're doing here in Douglas County. You know, it can be very easy to get to a place where you have a lot of different people talking about suicide risk in a lot of different ways, which can make it really difficult for people to know what to expect when they show up at, say, an emergency department, talk to us on the hotline or accessing one of Stephen's folks in the access center, or maybe they're talking to a social worker at this or Zero Suicide Initiative that, that we've been working on, the academy that we brought last April and continue to support that initiative has helped us already to start to glue together. I think some of the disparate pieces that we had going on within the system. So people are thinking about at least that outcome in, in a similar way. You know, I think in addition to that, one of the things that we're incredibly passionate about at KSP HQ, as you said, is, is training. We're already offering a variety of trainings to community partners, both to slide and to the Zero Suicide Initiative. And we, we've also participated in that CIT Council and training the CIT officers on the suicide prevention piece of that training. And I just anticipate that that particularly as we learn I think it will be important to include that. Because I think it's not just about us taking the message out there. We're also having conversations about what training we need to bring in for our counselors. So, for example, yesterday, we, we asked Erin Newton to, to find someone from, a couple of folks from Burt Nash to come in and talk with our counselors about what it's like for people when they come into the access center. You know, down to the detail of which desk are they gonna check in at and is, are, are their names going to be asked at the desk? You know, I know that I've talked with Sandra Dixon's folks about how we can better build our skills around interfacing with folks calling us while they're intoxicated. And that's already happening and it's something that we know will continue to happen. So, you know, I, I see this as a hub in, in more ways than one, right? We're, we're working on building this continuum. That's not just about services, but I think is also shared knowledge and, and really trusted trusting relationships, which is something that I appreciated about being a part of the Integrated Crisis Team that, that's operating here in Douglas County.
Commissioners, if, if I could ask a question or two, I just, this is the conversation that we had briefly at the Behavioral Leaders. I, I, I guess I was hoping perhaps Monica and Steve and perhaps Tony could kind of update like the status of the larger 988 conversation and funding for that. You know, I, I appreciate that we're a bit ahead of the curve here in terms of what we're looking to try to do here in Douglas County. But if there were is available, because this is now a national issue, how would that play into this proposal? And I know, I know there's, nothing's final, so it would just be helpful to get an update on that.
I'm happy to provide an update, Sarah. I was watching the YouTube stream of the House Appropriative Committee this afternoon, in fact. And that was going pretty well. So I think that that's a good update. So, as, Sarah, I know that you know, and I forgive me, County Commissioners, I'm not sure how much I've talked with any of you all. Legislation that we helped to get introduced in the House, that HB 2281, which would establish both 988 as the three-digit crisis line here in Kansas and create a funding mechanism through a fee on phone lines. That continues to sit in the Appropriations Committee at the House, which means that it is typically alive even though we are in the veto session. Been working with Representative Brenda Landwehr out of the Wichita area, who's very passionate about mental health services and now about 988. It is still possible that we are going to get pulled into general orders in, in, on the House floor. So, I honestly if that's done until, until they adjourn. But beyond that, we have kind of a, a more hopeful update in that funding to prepare the 988 system for the whole state has made it in at a level of $3 million to the Senate Omnibus, Omnibus budget and is at, is in the House Omnibus or there's a, yes, they're, they're trying to include it in the House Omnibus at a level of $7 million. Now, that's not just for hotline services, that services all across that continuum of care spectrum that we just shared with you all. So I believe that about 1.5 is targeted in both of those Omnibus bills for the Crisis Call Centers. Now, we're not the only crisis call center. We are first call for 104 counties at this point. Johnson County Mental Health Center is coming onboard to service Johnson County. But if that funding comes through, that, that we're going to be getting some support in a way that we've never really received state support to provide these services. And I think that that does nothing but increase the benefit for folks here in Douglas County. Does that help? I mean, it's not any final answers, but it's a little bit better news than I had for you last time. So.
Yes. I appreciate that update. And I just think as this situation evolves, you know, I appreciate, you know, you all keep, you're, you're following it a lot closer than we're able to, given the number of legislative items we're watching right now. But so thank
I will be relieved when I am no longer watching the YouTube stream of the House Appropriations Committee, though, just fully, fully truthful.
Yeah, there may be an opportunity for everybody to hear the screams as they echo throughout Douglas County that comes from our building as soon as we find out if that was successful or not. So that may be the for everybody to know that that has passed at some point is, is the jubilee coming from, from ourselves and many others.
I want to go ahead and step in and introduce Stephen O'Neil and Sandra Dixon. I know that we wanted to make sure to gather questions from you guys and it seems like we have had a pause there. Stephen and Sandra are going to be coming back to this commission in June and I want to just give it over to them to maybe highlight what they're going to be talking about at that time.
Hello, Commissioners. It's good to be back again. You guys get a double feature of Stephen. Sandra and I have been working together as Burt Nash and Decca with our teams to put together a proposal on establishing a mobile access team. So this would be a team that can respond to people, to Douglas County citizens where they live, where they work and they play to address that crisis in the moment where they're at. And we look forward to talking to you a lot more about that as we work to refine it between now and June. So, I don't know, Sandra, if you want to add anything there, but I just know we're both excited.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sandra Dixon, Chief Clinical Officer at DECA. I think Stephen covered it really well. We look forward to talking with you all again next month.
This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you both. Do we have any additional questions or discussion from Commissioners?
No, I always think it's a good sign of a great presentation if there's not a lot of questions. You all did a fabulous job of keeping us up to date. And, and we've been hearing about this as well. I, I really want to share my thanks for the listening session. I know that was a new idea that came out of the CJCC and I enjoyed listening in and, and hearing, you know, getting feedback from the community on that. We have more. Because clearly, from what I heard and what I then read in the minutes, you know, clearly there's still some misperceptions out there about what this is going to be. And so those opportunities, wow. You know, certainly we are listening, are also an opportunity to educate folks about what this will be. And I think that's really important. We never know when people are going to open the umbrella and, and listen to what, what's actually going to be taking place. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Portio. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
This is Commissioner Reed. I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to echo thanks and also say that I, you know, Monica, I actually really appreciate your articulation of the, the same language page and that that's kind of a good summation, I think, of like what, where we're headed. And it's certainly, it's an oversimplification of a lot of things, but I think that it really gets at the heart of, there's so many parts of the system, so many different agencies and points of entry, so to speak, into services, whatever type of services they may be. And I'm really excited about this opportunity where there, there is a place to start. And there is a place to get really clear same language, clear language information about what is available and what fits. And do they need some, some additional support walking through each of those steps? And like you mentioned, not everybody who calls needs that. And it's just a matter of needing some information and the right information and to be empowered to take a next step to reach out to somebody in their life for support. And so that's just a huge service. And I think that sometimes we, we don't always give enough credence to the, the simple beauty of empowering people with information and giving them awareness of what is available and then offering to support them in getting that started. I just think that I'm really excited about where we're headed as a community and I really appreciate all the, the legwork being done ahead of time. Super smart to, to work on planning it and figuring out what this looks like so that we can show up for real when 988 comes. So thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Portio. I do just want to echo what Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Reed kind of mentioned. This is such a big project and there have been moving parts. And so I, I do really appreciate the listening sessions. I think it gave the opportunity for the community to hear more about what was happening. And I'm seeing everyone on this Zoom today. We know we have a lot of people involved. So it's nice to keep hearing how this has evolved and all of the updates along the way. Thank you all for a wonderful presentation. We're excited to see this continue to move forward. Sarah, if we have nothing else, we will recess until our business meeting at 5:30.
Thank you.